We respectfully acknowledge that the County Halliburton is located on Treaty 20 Michisagi Territory and in the traditional territories of the Michisagi and Tripoli Nations, collectively known as the Williams Treaties and First Nations. We acknowledge the shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area and recognize its original inhabitants as the stewards of the lands and waters since time immemorial.
Thank you. Just my remarks this morning will be brief, but I would just like to start by recognizing the success of two of our community events held over the past week. Firstly, hike Halliburton, which offered access to guided tours this past weekend on to many exceptional hiking opportunities across Halliburton County. It was once again very well attended this year and underscoring the strength of our outstanding tourism offerings. Secondly, I'd like to our annual business summit was held yesterday, providing valuable insights and support to our local business community focusing on strategies to help them grow and strengthen our local economy. I want to extend my sincere appreciation to our economic development and tourism team Angela Ingram, Angelica Ingram and Eric Casper for their dedicated efforts in organizing these events. Their hard work under the leadership of Scott Oval has been instrumental in making these events successful and impactful. I understand that county that council will be receiving more detailed briefing on these events in a future council meeting. I'd like to thank all that for their continuous support and commitment to our community. Disclosure of community interest. Seeing approval of the agenda?
That the September 24th, 2025 Halliburton County Council agenda be approved?
I'm a move councillor Danielson second by councillor Carter. All in favor? It's carried. This morning we have a presentation as consolidated municipal service manager, housing and homeless strategy, deeply affordable and supportive housing strategy. We have Cheryl Faber and we have Michelle Corley and Jessica Donaldson. Welcome.
Thank you. And yes, it is a mouthful, isn't it? Well, good to see everyone this morning. It's been a while. So we are here today, actually excited to be here today. And I know that you have seen the presentation in advance, so hopefully it'll give us the opportunity to give you the context to what is in the presentation because I'm sure there was some shock and awe when you first looked at it. However, that's why a presentation in the context is always valuable to what's in a presentation. So I just wanted to say the level of stakeholder engagement, community engagement and actually individuals with lived experience that were a part of the development of this strategy was great. And I just, it's always nice to base a strategy on the local needs of the community. And so I just want you to know that that this strategy is very much grounded in that, which is nice to say today because sometimes we get challenged that we do not do enough community engagement and stakeholder engagement. So this strategy actually sets out six key priority areas for us to focus on around a strategy level. As we look out 10 years to actually bring the the goal of bending the curve to reduce homelessness over the next 10 years. So some of you may recall actually in 2019, when the province called for our first housing and homelessness 10 year strategy, our plan together was a very tactical plan with many, many activities outlined in it as well as very large targets approved and endorsed by both councils. And if you recall, the county actually chose the highest target of some building 750 new rental units from 2020 to 2029. And so I was talking to our manager of building and properties from the Quartha Lakes Halliburton Housing Corporation and just asked him how much right now it's costing him to build a unit. And we're about $300,000 to build one unit. So if you equate the 750 target that the county council endorsed in 2019, that would actually equate to about 225 million that you endorsed at that time. So the other piece though, at that time, we didn't lay out a financial strategy and we didn't lay out the long-term planning needs associated with those targets and that housing and home assist plan. So we didn't look at the capital needs and we didn't look at the operating needs. We just set the targets. So we've learned from that experience and it brought these lessons forward with us into this refresh. So with with recent provincial direction, we just recently heard from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. They want the 47 municipal service managers to refresh our our plans and focus on reducing homelessness. So given we started this journey with Help Seeker in 2024, we felt like we were a little bit ahead of the game. And now the ministry wants these plans submitted at least by May. So I think we're in good step, in a good step to meet that goal. And this strategy then brings just that. It's actually bringing extensive quantitative research and qualitative engagement, as I said, and input that has gone into establishing the six key priorities for the next 10 years, as well as we've brought scenario modeling forward to reduce homelessness, as you'll see in the presentation. And we've included the long-term capital and operating impacts. So I wanted just to share with you today in speaking with CAO Dyke, we actually looked at the presentation that was sent to you in advance. And there were some questions within that without context. So we have changed the slide deck this morning to bring clarity to that for you today. So hence why there's a little bit of a different version that will come to you today. And lastly, I just would like to take the time to thank Jessie Donaldson, who's with us today virtually, who will be presenting. Her team from Help Seeker has been amazing. I just can't get over the intelligence that has come with this with Help Seeker to help us do this work. We've been told we're the first in the province to be developing a plan as such to move forward with reducing homelessness. And I'd also be remiss if I didn't thank our team manager Corley and supervisor Malkaster and their team with our housing services division have been step forward and step front in helping to develop this strategy. So thank you. So with that, I introduce Jessie and we'll take you through the slides.
Good morning. Nice to, nice to meet you virtually. I'm told I can share my screen here. So let's, let's do this together and let me know if you can see it. Okay. Yes?
Yes, we can.
Fantastic. Okay. And Cheryl, please keep me honest on timing. So welcome. I'm Jessie. Thank you for having me. I'm Jessie Donaldson, Executive Vice President of Strategic Services. I work for Help Seeker and we only do one thing is support government largely municipalities with social strategies. My background's in housing and homelessness for the last 15 years, largely around larger strategies, provincial and federal. So thank you for the privilege of coming here today and also the opportunity over the last year and a half to to meet residents of your community, to meet your staff and to come up with something that I, I hope you think serves you well over the coming years. So why we're here today and as Cheryl mentioned in advance of the requirement to build the the refreshed 10 year housing strategy, we did approximately 100 interviews, 65 of which were people with lived experience of different affordability, housing affordability issues, housing instability, but also staff. We talked to Halliburton staff, Quartha staff. We talked to KLH. We talked to other service providers who really understand what's needed, what are the challenges? And and the the goal for me was, this isn't just a Lindsay strategy. So we drove all over. We drove all over Halliburton and Quartha and really wanted to understand what each community was facing and how we might represent that in a strategy. And so priorities for the strategy are not just housing, but what would really advance community wellbeing, safety, economic prosperity, and how might that tie to housing? So we bring forward the 10 year housing strategy focused on deeply affordable and supportive housing, and you'll see why in that regard. Included in the strategy, but I want to be clear, separate from the strategic priorities itself, our outcome scenarios from which you and and staff moving forward can build a financial model and advocacy plan should you choose to do so. And so the scenarios I'm going to show you with costs help you answer what is the scale that we need for the outcomes we collectively want to achieve. And then also the framework or the strategy, excuse me, provides, I think, a foundation for strengthening the regional muscle and housing delivery. And so these same strategic priorities, these same principles that will be used if we're deeply affordable and homelessness response are the are the similar mechanisms you need to strengthen the whole housing continuum, which is just a reality over the next few decades. And finally, and as I mentioned, it really, I hope recognizes the unique needs across Quartha and Halliburton, whether we're in Lindsay or Wilberforce and that will serve both Quartha and the county. Recommendations today, and this is one of the slides Cheryl mentioned that was sort of made more clear and then forgive me for for my previous unclear attempt. I will, I will take responsibility for that. So three recommendations and today I'm hoping my goal is to provide you as detailed and transparent information as possible, so you can feel confident with those recommendations. So one and two are to receive the deeply affordable housing strategy, which includes the priorities and the the sub priorities within it and to endorse the priority areas. I'm going to go through all six priorities with you in full detail. These priorities are agnostic of scale. These are things you have to do, whether you're building 20 units or 600 units. And so that's the foundation of how I believe you might be able to move forward. And then the final really important one is to direct staff to complete long-range financial modeling in Q2 of '26. So again, what I'm showing you today is the outcome based scenarios. They answer what would it re, what would it take to reach where we all want to be? And in regards to homelessness and housing stability within the community. It'll, that allows you to build your your priorities against your goals. But it's not lost on me that municipal housing efforts live within real affordability constraints, lives within reliance on upper levels of government for investment. And so the third step of the process is to ask what are the levers we can pull, including advocacy to other levels of government? That will allow you to close the gap between what is physically possible and what is legislatively and ethically desirable. And those two will never meet. The scale is 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 too large, and I don't say that in Halliburton or Quartha only. It is too large across Ontario right now. However, if you do know the ultimate scale of what you may need, it allows you to see what distance you could close between those two. And so I'll start this conversation today and I, I don't believe it's responsible to bring forward to any council an infrastructure strategy without the context for scale. That's information you need added to move forward. But where you land in regards to what is needed requires that full financial modeling exercise with Quartha and Halliburton in regards to affordability, sustainability, and also these opportunities, these new opportunities that are coming from the federal and provincial government. So for that reason, the the third recommendation is to, in addition to the strategic priorities separately, is to explore how you might build housing capacity and direct staff to complete the financial modeling to do so. Okay, so the previous plan and and all previous plans really, housing and homelessness were built on a very folk homelessness response focused coordination and efficacy and performance in the homelessness portfolio and very, very granular. Those no longer serve us and nor are those the requirements. So it it sort of behooves us in this next phase to next phase of housing strategies within the province to think of both kind of the strategy, the underpinning strategic priorities that will serve you for 10 years and the plan, the nimbleness of a more regular annual plan that will allow you to respond to to community needs, municipal needs, new government opportunities, and as well as affordability constraints. So today, what I'm presenting to you is really a blend, but largely focused on those core pillars that I think and and the administration thinks will serve the community moving forward. As Cheryl mentioned, I think about a month ago, excuse me, the Minister of Municipal Affairs sent a letter with priorities on what the plan update needed to be. I was relieved because the the finished plan looked quite similar to to what their requirements are. However, there's, there's some closed door requirements that we are aware of through provincial government and federal government that I'll also also share with you today. But if I could just focus on on these, one is a continued focus on experience, people experiencing and at risk of homelessness, specifically in regards to how unsheltered homelessness is managed as 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 a visible indication of of how well your system is performing, quote unquote. Two, the coordination across services, across systems remains as important, focus on health, mental health and substance use. But three, and it's in how it's placed in the letter is very specific, is advancing strategic approaches along the housing continuum, moving people through the housing continuum. And that's a more housing focused directive than we've previously seen from the ministry. And my understanding is that is going to be one of the main focuses in regards to looking at requests for funding from municipalities. And then as well, a much greater onus on collecting, sharing and reporting data. There are three things the government cares about right now. Federal government as well, frankly. One, value for money is the money we're spending getting the outcomes we want and can you show it to me? Two, transparency in spending. We are, we are heading into a a new paradigm in regards to public service and how money is spent, particularly in social sector. And three, cost matching. And and so indications from provincial government that expectation that both municipalities will come to the table, but there will be a conversation for those communities who are able to show value for money and transparency in in how that money's being used. I think I won't spend too much time on this, but of course this plan sits against her strategy, excuse me, sits against not only what we heard from community and and where you think the the wind is blowing in regards to socioeconomic trends and what your community may be, county may be facing in regards to affordability, but also the legislative responsibility of the consolidated service manager. So the legislative need to align housing and homelessness and human services, funding rent geared to income, managing the community housing list, developing the tenure housing homelessness plan, and then reporting to the province on compliance and performance. And so we have to hold the legislative mandate within the the aspirations you may have as as communities responding to homelessness and then how these best fit and where the role for for County Halliburton is. Quick, quick briefer on on the housing continuum. Because if we we don't look at who we're building for, we we build for everyone, therefore we build for no one. And so on the left-hand side, what you can see is emergency shelter, transitional housing and supportive housing. Those are typically your your homelessness response. That's transitioning people out of homelessness. But then we have the deeply affordable housing, which is non-market housing and and for too long, and this is being rectified to the federal government right now, for too long, we've talked about affordable housing as 80% of market income. But what we know from the quantitative data and the interviews that we did is 80% of of market data isn't isn't affordable for most of market rent is not affordable for most people. In fact, it's deeply unaffordable. And so the strategy really focuses on those first four. Has not to say that affordable rental and market housing isn't essential within the community. And like I said, the strategic priorities we put forward, I believe strengthen the muscle for all of those. You can do it all. You just have to decide what to do first. Won't go too much into the data, but I will say I sat in shelter, recreation center, food bank, fire station, employment center, library over over the week that I got to enjoy in your community. And what's really clear to me is is this kind of conception of who's experiencing housing instability and who's experiencing homelessness is 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 not, is not correct. So that, so the extent of the affordability crisis that's happening, especially given the inflated rents that we saw in Halliburton and Quartha, more than I expected is significant. And so it would be sort of a misnomer to consider this strategy only for the people who are facing the highest barriers. I really do believe this strategy is at the benefit of a large portion of of the population that lives in Halliburton and Quartha. The reality with the the direction that the affordability and socioeconomic and the housing market is going in is that a growing proportion of people will be priced out of the private rental market. So older adults, single families or single parents, excuse me, young people finding their first job. And that makes it more and more difficult for people to stay in Halliburton, to stay in Quartha. We also can see that the federal government has signaled clearly that deeply affordable, that non-market housing, that left-hand side is the only infrastructure investment that's going to protect community wellbeing and economic prosperity. And so it's, it's an opportune time to have these conversations. But it is also a different kind of municipal muscle to build deeply affordable housing at the scale that's required. I think this is is fairly telling here. So what we can see on the left is the share of renters by rent level. And in 2006, 60% of rents within the region were between 500 and and 999 and inflation aside. 2021, only 29% of rents are between 500 and 900, $500 and 999. You'll see that the Ontario Works Social Assistance and the ODSP payments are just about that. So that's a significant band that we need to watch. Conversely, 2006, we see 1500, 1%, only 1% of rents were were above 1500. And then in 2021, we see that upwards of 22%. And the number of families who cannot afford, as you know, $1,500 rent a month, if they can find a unit close to school, close to transit, is is a lot. Quickly, core housing need. So that means that your housing is either unaffordable, unsuitable, too many people in in based on the rooms and the size available or inadequate. So major repairs, which we did have a lot of conversations more in rural parts of your community about the the shape of housing and and repairs needed. And so it's people, family, percentage of families living in one of these who cannot afford a better alternative. So 31% across the region of older adults are living in core housing need. Which represents a significant concern in regards to who may be facing homelessness in your community in the coming years. Single mothers, 22% are living in core housing need, which has impacts for for child and and family wellbeing. Indigenous renters, 71% of of indigenous renters in core housing need. And then also people with disabilities, so higher rates of core housing need. And so again, my point being this really does affect everybody and it is, it is not just a kind of a homelessness strategy. Okay. So in reference to to the modeling we did, we did three different scenarios. We said, what would happen if if we did nothing at all? If we continued with this, with the the course that we're on, with the system we have, with the investment from provincial government and and respective municipalities. So what we can see is the starting point ran out is about 450. That's through the course of the year. People cycle in and out of homelessness. So that's not a the current number. So throughout the course of the year, estimated 450 people experiencing homelessness. And if we were to follow that trajectory out based on your respective population growths, we would see by year 10, and this is both Quartha and Halliburton together, there would be 1,545. The estimated Halliburton portion, which looks within the data about 25, 25% is 113 people to 309. So a significant growth. What that means practically for for what you see and and what you hear from residents and and people with families concerns about housing stability, longer shelter stays, growing encampments, higher emergency service costs, health, justice, police bylaw, and then also strain on neighborhood and and community cohesion. And it's not lost on me. Some of the the real frustration and and tension within the community, both by housed and unhoused individuals on the impact of the housing instability is is having on on community cohesion and and wellbeing. And so when I said outcome based scenarios at the beginning, these are not plans. These are frankly not even targets. It's my due diligence to say to you, if you were to do X, here's the outcome you might expect. And so on the top, the blue line, what you can see is the business as usual. That's the number of people experiencing homelessness if we do nothing additional. And I think we can all agree that's not the option and nor is that an acceptable result. And so the middle is a stabilization. So what that represents is is a fairly still significant investment focused on deeply affordable housing and and that homelessness response, a multimillion dollar investment. And really what it does is ensure that in 10 years, you're able to get back where you were today. And and on the pessimistic side, you could say, is that really worth it? And on the positive side, you can say in 10 years, we're going to wish we were back to where we were because the alternative is the is the blue line. And then the final one, and where I'll spend more time on is the reduction scenario. And so that's the number of of units, the the infrastructure investment that would be required in order to to significantly reduce homelessness over the next 10 years. Fortunately, and and in in the spirit of the direction of recommendation three of directing staff to build that financial plan, you have all of this data and this tool available, available to you to continue to run different scenarios. So as you work through what the desired outcome is versus what is affordable and and practical, you're going to be able to to together run some of these and say, if we did X, how might we expect homelessness outcomes to change? Specifically, and this is for the reduction scenario, we can see there is an initial strategic investment, fast to build. It peaks at about 500 people at year three. That's time to to get trouble in ground. And then the decline begins fairly rapidly because of your community, community size. So in that reduction scenario, what we have is 356 deeply affordable, non-market units. 120 supportive housing units of different acuity levels to really support people with long-term mental health and substance use concerns. 85 transitional housing units for for transitions out of housing or, excuse me, transitions into housing. So people who just need a tiny bit of a support as they get into the the rental market and then 8,000 prevention support. So really keeping people housed before they lose that housing. That's the most cost effective way you can address these issues. Here we split it out between Halliburton and Quartha. So top line, this is under the reduction scenario with the the figures I just gave before. You can see at year three that peak and then significant reductions as some of those units start to come online. The the estimated sort of Quartha portion, if you will, is peaks at 430 and goes down to 76, but more importantly, that Halliburton portion. So peaking at 143, down to 25. I've gone through the kind of the, I think, the the development of it, just with reassurance that I believe we really heard a cross section of voices and I hope this, this does justice to to the people that I spoke to. Right, six guiding principles. One, municipal, municipal action, excuse me, is required to enable the provision of deeply affordable and supportive housing that the private market will not build. We have spent, and I mean the collective, we in Ontario and Canada have spent the last five years at least with the idea that these sort of developer incentives is going to build deeply affordable housing. It's not, it doesn't. That's, that's not the way the market has worked. And so that the strategy acknowledges that municipal action is required, but it's very careful about where that municipal action has to live within the levers that are exist to a municipal corporation and where it will require additional investment from other orders of government. Municipal tools and resources should be aligned with clearly defined housing outcomes, that it takes the whole strength of a corporation to build infrastructure, just as you would roads and sewer capacity, et cetera. Three, existing lower cost housing should be protected to help preserve system capacity. That's not only a ministry focused, but that's just the the cheapest way, the most effective way, excuse me, for for you to make gains on on homelessness and housing stability because you you can't lose the base that you have. Four, effective delivery will be depend on clear roles, shared timelines and mutual accountability across departments and partners. And so you can build more that you need more. But if if there's not, if everyone's not pulling their weight, frankly, and if there's not shared accountability and transparent accountability for every part of the system, including service provision, then it won't work. Five, essential senior government investment will allow for delivery of deeply affordable. Make no mistake, I'm not telling you. I don't, I don't know if you can achieve the reduction serial without that investment from other orders of government, but I do know this strategy puts you in a very strong advocacy position, a data focused uh other orders of government, but I do know this strategy puts you in a very strong advocacy position, um a data focused advocacy position to try to meet those clothes and and close that gap. And then finally, crisis and transitional responses uh are part of the housing system have to be aligned. So that homelessness system, serving system, needs to be aligned with the 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 greater objectives within the strategy. Okay, six strategic priorities here. How am I for time? Let's speed up. All right, um. First is expanding deeply affordable housing. Second is to prevent homelessness and and improve pathways to stability, and that's where you're going to see real gains in community well being and and things you see when you walk outside your house. Three, uh strengthening community and supportive housing delivery, that deeply affordable housing. Four, aligning corporate systems to support service delivery. Five, strengthening governance, and and really this conversation is about just that of what are the roles of Coretta, what are the roles of of Halliburton, and how do you best work together to advance housing delivery? And six, I'm a broken record, but I promise you, I'm not saying you have to do this all. Advocate for senior level of government investment, and there couldn't be a better time to do that. Um. Again, these are agnostic of of scale. So whether you build two, whether you build two hundred, I really believe these strategic priorities and and the actions underneath are required uh to to advance housing in in the communities. Um, how I generally think about homelessness is three factors. One is inflow, the factors that increase the number of people who are experiencing homelessness in any community. You have low influence there. You can't change social assistance rates, you can't change health and justice impacts, you can't change the economy, really. Uh. So what this plan recognizes is that there's limits to a municipal mandate. But where you do have of control and and levers is one, uh through the service manager legislative responsibility, you have high influence in how you respond to homelessness, how long people are staying, how you're prioritizing individuals, what staffing ratios do you have, matching people to the right spaces, performance expectations. And so a key aspect of of this strategy is to really focus on optimizing what we have. And then in the outflow, you have medium control. And what this strategy is about is how do we organize the levers we do have to strengthen our capacity in that outflow? So that's building spaces for people to exit into, because you can have the best homelessness response in the world. But if there's nowhere for people to go and people keep coming in, that system is going to get further and further strained. And you're going to see some of the 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 community safety um impacts you're experiencing in your community. So orange and green, I'll reference throughout these strategies, these these six strategic priorities, but that's where this uh really focuses. Okay, uh first, expand deeply affordable and supportive housing strategy through legislative and municipal tools. So four priorities here, strengthening the service manager leadership at housing development in in recognition that if there's if there's not that leadership, it it may not get done. And then that's the reality of um of how coordinated deeply affordable housing builds need to be. Two, build and maintain a credible pipeline of deeply affordable housing project projects. This is not only necessary for your own financial planning, long term planning, but it's also necessary for advocacy. So if you are knocking on the door of the provincial government and you say, here's the outcomes we've mapped, here's what we expect, here's the spend, here's the proj- project that's ready, it's a heck of a lot easier to say yes to. Three, target investment to housing that the private market can't deliver, I think we've gone through that in in detail. And then four, built in as a key action to the goal, an explicit key action is develop a long range financial model to support delivery. Next is preventing homelessness and improving pathways. So supporting people to to stay housed, that's the best for the community and that's best financially, and to create sustainable paths to stability, so that when people do experience housing, they're able to exit out of that system as fast as possible. So early housing focused intervention to prevent prevent housing loss, ensuring that services are low barrier uh and are operating as best they can with the resources they have, including emergency and transitional options. Ensuring that you're matching the right person to the right space. And so um when they go to that, they're they're successful, they're happy, they're healthy. Greater integration, and this is also a provincial requirement of health and human services in recognition of of a substance use and mental health crisis we're facing. And then in future, near to the end of the plan, considering supports for tenants and landlords in order to to strengthen those relationships to sustain stable housing within the private uh market. This goes back to the orange, this is your orange box of how do we optimize what we have? Um. So that if we're building more, we know we're getting the best value for money out of what we have. Three, uh three of six, uh strengthen community and supportive housing. And so here, it it's a mix of community housing delivery and and also community housing stock. So look at who's prioritized for community housing and ensure that's operating the best it can. Strengthening supportive housing delivery for residents with complex needs. So as residents, and and it's not unique to your community, but as residents are experiencing uh more complex needs, substance use needs, perhaps mental health needs, are the community housing providers prepared, equipped, funded in order to adequately deal with that? Stabilize and modernize the existing stock, as I mentioned. And then also build structures that support alignment and accountability. So again, it goes back to that performance, mix, performance management, and then preserving existing community housing stock. Strategic party number four is to align municipal systems. So processes, timelines and decisions to move faster with fewer barriers. And and we heard quite a few barriers in conversations with people, not only lived experience, but staff, barriers that are not insurmountable, barriers that are not like, oh, hey, social assistance isn't enough. No, these are real process barriers that can be addressed, but it requires everybody in the room and delegated authority to to identify these barriers and remove them. Um. So treating and acknowledging deeply affordable and of supportive housing as core infrastructure, declaring that um together. Coordinating internal functions around shared housing outcome, finance, development, business. It's all has to come together uh if you want to achieve the outcome, some of the outcomes I showed you previously. Strengthen staff capacity for housing delivery, is everyone saying the same thing, is everyone understanding the same thing? And then finally, redesigning internal processes to cut delays and improve delivery. So that's again focused on that orange, what we can control. We may not be able to control the economy, but what we can control is that our systems are are buttoned up and we've reduced as much friction as possible to get us from point A to point B. Five, establish clear leadership across municipality, county and partners to drive housing deliver delivery and accountability, so that's the stake in the ground that said, yes, this is a priority. We don't know exactly how we're going to get there, but here's how we're going to start. Formalizing a housing service agreement with Halliburton, hello, we're here. Clarifying roles and mandates through those service agreements. Creating a system wide performance management framework for anyone who's touching that homelessness and housing system. Expanding collaboration through delivery tables with partners, um so service delivery partners. And then, of course, a municipal governance structure with delegated authority to lead implementation and remove some of those process barriers um that we've discussed. Six is advocate for senior level government investment, I I'm not going to keep beating you over the head with this, but coordinated advocacy from both Coretta and Halliburton with data and transparency of spending and transparency of outcomes is going to put you so fast ahead of 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 others right now who may be just starting some of this process. And so maintaining a cost of pipeline for priority housing projects and using data and modeling such as some of the outcomes I showed you to support future funding requests. And and I am I am quite sure that will be an increasing priority from the province moving forward. Okay, a a a portion of the strategy is also the governance structure. So really formalizing, and I know there's already work underway on that, but how city council works together with Jack, the Joint Advisory Committee, how you work together with Coretta, uh the city implementation structure that lives within Coretta as the consolidated service manager and and their accountability and responsibility, and then also providers. And so how does everyone work together uh in order to achieve these goals? And I I hope these strategic actions start to build some consensus. It's on time here, I'll just do two minutes more. So the, as promised, I won't bring, we won't bring scenarios without cost, um because you need both. So total investment needed under that reduction scenario, this is specifically the reduction scenario, would be two hundred and sixty million, the capital approximately two hundred and two million, or almost two hundred and three, and operating fifty seven point two, that's on top of what's in the system today in regards to operating. Um. Wh- where, and that's over the ten years. What you might expect um within that kind of reduction flow is shelters are going to still increase, encampments may increase, people, more people experiencing homelessness. But by year three or four, you're going to start to see that reduction, the impacts in community. Uh waitlist will shorten, fewer people are going to return to homelessness, shelter use crisis response is going to decline. You may be able even to convert shelters into more sustainable housing. And then finally, in year ten, fewer people are in crisis, and and I believe neighborhoods and and surfaces will feel less strained. There is a business case um for this, as we know, emergency responses is the most expensive thing. Uh you can do significant evidence, and so really this focuses on prevention, on long term housing supports, pulling away from some of that crisis response. When we then look at the proportional attribution model, again, I'm still in the reduction scenario, and you might find yourself in a different scenario as you move through that financial plan. But as I consider the reduction scenario, the the considerations for for Coretta and Halliburton and how a regional model needs to be delivered, um what we considered was the need specific to to Halliburton and the location and how the service types mess might best be uh cited. So what we really have for the high acuity supportive, you don't need that many in your region. So it makes sense for it to be a really centralized location, close to hospital, specialized staff, twenty four seven. In your medium low supportive, local integration is important, so having access across the region is necessary. The deeply affordable, definitely you need access across the region. And so what we have in the reduction scenario is deeply affordable housing cited in Halliburton. And finally, prevention, and and what's most important is that across Halliburton or Coretta, regardless of where you are geographically, that if you need it, you have access to those prevention supports to keep you in your home and keep you in your community. What we have here, uh estimated Halliburton uh benefit under the reduction scenario is approximately thirty nine million, so three point nine million per year. Uh that accounts for fifty deeply affordable housing units, twenty four medium supportive housing units, twelve transitional housing, really important for youth, uh women fleeing uh violence, and then the prevention allocation. So regardless of where you are, you can have the supports to to stay in your home. In addition, in under this reduction scenario, this two hundred and ninety million, there's also equivalent value from from the regional system. And so access to additional supportive and deeply affordable housing across the whole region, prevention, shelters, additional rent subsidies, and then just the systems coordination, administration and performance management that's provided through the consolidated service manager. I'm significantly low on time, I've talked too much. So we're, I think I've explained kind of governance at length here, and you do have those slides. I I I guess I think I'll go back to the recommendations and and one that uh you receive uh the the strategy and the framework and endorse the the priority actions, and then direct staff to complete that financial modeling, saying, if this is the goal, how far can we get? And then what's affordable, what's desirable, uh what are our constraints, capital and operating? What are the opportunities uh for for cost offsets through other orders of government? And then how can we bring forward cost forecast for approval in the two thousand twenty seven budget? Uh, thank you, I'll stop there and allow for for questions, but I appreciate it.
Jesse, thank you for the presentation. Questions? Counselor Ferry.
I have a question, but uh, oh, I do have a question. This is uh, this is a a shot at a point in time when housing costs are three hundred dollars a square foot and two twenty twenty two, they were two hundred.
Yes.
So what what, how how can you project that uh things won't change? And I think there's another big cause to housing, is because there's a shortage. We've had so many people come in the country and they're buying these units up. And and I've talked to a lot of seniors and and uh uh I'd say older people. And there's a whole generation of people out there that are staying in their parents' houses, or they're getting assistance from their parents. Were they considered, where are they going to go? Like, this is a big problem, and it's got to be dealt with, that's the root cause. And the root cause is that the big governments have to step up, or they have to put the interest rate down so it's almost zero. We can't, we can't do this, we can't, we're going to create a whole other level of poverty by putting taxation up so high that people can't stay in their their modest homes. And that's exactly where we're going here right now. So I don't know what the answer to it is, you've you've put a lot of good stuff together there, and and I understand that. But you know what, there is no magic formula until somebody steps up and deals with the root cause, which there's not enough housing right now. And and we we need to create affordable housing, and nobody can seem to define affordable. Affordable to who? And I can tell you right now, I know homeless people in Halliburton that won't go to a home. They want to stay on the street. That's a different mentality. Um, and I I I can't believe that, but that's what police are telling me, and I believe it. So, you know, we got uh, we got some major issues here, and I I appreciate the work that you've done, it's great. But again, we have to keep in mind what is the real problem, and how do we deal with the real problem, and how do we afford the problem? That's uh, that's a big job.
Counselor Dennison.
Uh, thanks so much for the presentation, there's a lot of good information there. Um, at the risk of being a bit cheeky, I would say this is a deeply unaffordable project to put forward to us, um and with an extremely um tight timeline, given how we would do, how we'd lay out financing for this uh project. Uh, to me, one of the challenges that we have is to offer a variety of housing, not just affordable housing, but everybody seems to need housing at every level. Um, I I can't, I can't agree to this, and I see it as one of the recommendations that we do get you know, some some financial projections, and I'd like to see what the impact is on our taxpayers. Um, you know, to look at this kind of money. Um, I I don't, I think we also need to look at our ability, particularly in in Dicart and Minden, what our capacity for servicing is in water and sewer, and whether we can handle the number of units that we're talking about here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I I see that the uh control seems to be placed on the service manager, and I I don't think that this that we can have a strong partnership without a a a a solid partnership between the service manager and the county to make sure that the specific needs of Halliburton are met. Um, and uh, you know, there there has to be ongoing review of this program to see how we're we're making out. I can see how it would take much longer than a ten year period, and during that time, we really need to keep a close eye on how it's working and 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 what what changing costs are. Um, and I, you know, I think this is a huge challenge for the the lower tiers to contribute to. I've got some real solid concerns about this, and I I I'm not saying that it's not something that we need to do, of course it is, this is a big problem. Um, but how we're going to pay for it and the impact is, as uh uh Mayor Fury has said, uh the impact on our taxpayers and the possibility of creating more homelessness or more challenges for people um is substantial.
I would like just Cheryl, maybe if you could a- address the funding from the uh, from the province and and the feds on the project? The projects?
Um, through you, from what perspective? Like, is there any, or uh what are we hearing, is that
Yes.
you're wondering about? Um. Jessie, maybe I might pass it to you, because I know you've had recent, some recent meetings with the province and maybe a federal uh look at some of that. Certainly, we know um Prime Minister Carney has just recently announced a strategy. However, the details haven't filtered them their way down yet. So Jessie, maybe if you could just share a little bit from your perspective, because you're much more entrenched in those tables.
Sure, um, no commitments. Um, but my understanding is that at a provincial and a federal level, investment in infrastructure is the top social, social priority, including housing. So I believe there to be money on the table. Uh, what I also know is there is no, there are no asks without demonstrating current efficacy of spending and clear plans of how future spending would be used and how that may improve outcomes. And so um from now moving forward, I think there'll be greater onus on on data and transparent discussions and real targets. And um evidence that uh municipalities evidence that municipalities have also have their own house in order. That's not to say from a, a massive contribution standpoint, but evidence that there's, that there's a plan, that there's a lined plan, which you can see in the new requirements for the ten-year housing and homelessness plan, very focused, focused on housing. And so I believe there's an opportunity. It would take some savvy advocacy and, and, but I, I do think that the collaboration between Cortha and Halliburton can be such a strength and be positioned as a priority for Ontario, particularly with the, the mix of urban and rural communities and the level of homelessness that you're facing in the community. And I do think a strategy of this sort would, would really put you ahead of the game much prior to May.
Gary, you had a comment first, Bob right there.
Yeah, thank you, Warden Burton. I, I think further that point, Jesse, I think it's important when, one of the recommendations go back in the financial calculations being done and projections forecasting it over the life of the plan as to when the money is coming in play, like when, when, once the benchmarking for the investment is key. But one thing I think is important and this goes hand in hand to your last comment, Abuska, yes, through an improved partnership between the county and the city, there is a strength and advocacy going forward, provided the nuances of both are taken into account going forward. But one of the things that they will fall flat if we do not include an affordability quotient within the plan. Because as was pre- earlier, we are, we do are under, like most municipalities in Ontario, under significant financial restraint. The burden being placed on our taxpayers, just we all understand the importance we're doing. But until that's put in place, it's going to put an incredible burden on the, on the, on the implementation of this plan. And a lot of it will get lost if the affordability isn't addressed right up front. And this goes beyond just calculating the affordability of the program itself. Because as Deputy Warden Danielson mentioned earlier, one of the key factors involved with the developments in these, these type of projects in communities like ourselves, and this would extend into CKL as well, is the in-ground infrastructure, the support infrastructure that's needed to support these entities. When we're looking at the increased housing pieces as well, we struggle with transit. We struggle with in-ground infrastructure on the water and sewer capacity in our plants. You start adding those dollar figures on top of the gross dollar figures put in the program, that has to be part of the equation. Because i- if we can't afford it, we can't build it. And I think that, I don't want that lost. And this isn't a criticism of the program that we saw this morning, but that was not included as part of the strategic part of it, the actual ancillary costs. And without that, I think that's where the, the strategy falls short without having that part of it being identified as part of strategic elements of the program.
Counselor Carter.
I, I think the answer to the question about, you know, the federal and provincial funding is that we have no idea, uh, you know, in every project that we have, we, we, you know, we put forward or we request funding from the feds, we request funding from the province. And we have no idea going in whether that is going to be realized. So there can be all the announcements that are made at the most senior levels. But in, when you get right down to it, each individual project, you have no idea going in of what you're going to possibly get. I really enjoyed the, the numbers or the, the comment you made that the, the, the feds and the province are looking for cost matching. You know, at the end of the day, everybody has to realize there's only one taxpayer. So whether the money is coming from the feds, the province, or, or, you know, the municipalities, that it's all coming out of the same pocketbook. And so this is something that, I don't know. I think governments like to bounce around those, those, those concepts. But, you know, nobody really remembers that it's the taxpayer that's, that's got to fund it. So I've only really been involved in housing to largely for seven years. And at the, at the end of the day, when I look at this, um, you know, this is, A, it's a very complicated issue. And, you know, in, in, within this, when we start talking about supportive housing and deeply affordable housing and so on and so forth. These are different things. You know, the, the supportive housing requires that you're going to in fact have that word support available. Right now, we don't have the mental health practitioners. We don't have the medical practitioners. We don't have the nurses. We don't have the people who are going to provide those supports. And so, you know, you can't just assume that you can build supportive housing because unless you have the supports for it, it's, it's just a house. You know, and so it's, that's, that's something that's, that's difficult. The other thing here is that, and, you know, rightfully so, the government has been concerned about the homeless. And but if we look at our housing corporation, we have, what, eight hundred and twenty-one units? I think it is. And a lot of those people have not been homeless for a long time because we, we have given them a place to live. And so, you know, you can't, you can't really just look at this from the homeless because we've got all these people who are, you know, need supports, need some sort of a rent geared to income or whatever that may be. And that's a much bigger number than this. And, you know, we have to keep expanding that. I can't, our, last year, our waiting list was what, fourteen hundred people or, or so? Well, and, and it's growing. So the, the thing is, is that we also have to build those homes. You know, and so that's over and above this to some degree. Um, and, you know, I would really need to sort of understand this in the bigger picture of all the homes that we need to build that, all the homes that we need to build that are into that more affordable as opposed to deeply affordable. You know, I, I don't know the relationship there and so that's got me a bit confused. And I think the other thing is, is that the relationship and the organization, particularly as it comes to Halliburton, being, you know, what are we if we have a service agreement? Are we a customer of CKL? Are we a partner or are we a minority shareholder? What is that relationship? Because I think I see it right now being fractured and not being sustainable going forward. So I think that there's an awful lot that needs to be discussed here. And, you know, I, I can't really approve this until I could understand the, the total picture a bit more.
Counselor Dannison and Counselor Shell.
Um, I, I just referring to Jesse's comments about, you know, the, the Prime Minister saying that he was supportive of, of infrastructure, spending on infrastructure. There's a lot of other infrastructure that we're, you know, we're having some serious challenges with keeping up with, with the needs of the community that, that have to be balanced against this. And, and I really question how successful we would be in an application for funding when, you know, when we're compared with larger urban centers that need, you know, even more affordable housing than, than we do. You know, I, I have my doubts. We haven't had an awful lot of success in getting funding. So, you know, to rely or say that we're going to rely on provincial or federal funding is, is a bit of a pipe dream in my estimation. I am struggling a little bit with the terminology that we're hearing today because, you know, it wasn't too long ago that we were hearing from the province that they couldn't really define affordable housing versus attainable housing. And now we're hearing deeply affordable, uh, deeply affordable housing and, and supportive housing. And, um, you know, I, I guess I'm not quite clear on where all that came from and exactly what's meant by some of the terminology that we're hearing.
Jesse, you had a comment?
If I, if I may through the chair, and I appreciate the previous two comments, I did want to note that the modeling, the scenario modeling that was done, it is not to house, it is not simply to house people who are experiencing homelessness or once they're homeless. It, the largest portion is to house people who may be at risk or approaching at risk. Um, and that's those deeply affordable units. And so those are provided well below rental market. And so it is factoring in all of the people who may need housing as well as people experiencing housing. So it is a more inclusive plan than I, that I may have presented and I just wanted that to be clear. And on terminology, I, I couldn't agree more. I, I'm amazed that at all levels of government, particularly provincial and federal, there hasn't been alignment on those conversations. What we mean when we say supportive housing is housing with intense usually mental health and substance use supports where people may stay in the medium term or long term. And then in, for deeply affordable housing, we are speaking of that rent geared to income housing. And forgive me for, for the, the inconsistency in language, but it's, it's that rent geared to income housing that benefits a large portion of the community and a growing portion of the community. So I, I wouldn't want to give you the impression that this is a homelessness plan. This is for affordability for, for a large segment of your community.
Thank you. Counselor Shell.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I agree with most of the comments that have been made by the other fellow members of council here. Even if we built the housing, we currently don't have the resources required for that number of people to even move here currently. There's doctors, mental health, jobs, just like everybody has mentioned, the list goes on. We have people who have lived here for a decade who don't have a family doctor. And then you're going to bring in, create housing to bring more people in who then will not have doctors. So the current resources will only be diminished, they'll actually become non-existent for some people. Yeah, I, I totally see why this is, you know, a need for many people. I just am really concerned about how this is going to affect money, obviously. But also as Counselor Ferry said, you know, the people who currently do pay taxes here, this has to get paid by somebody. And, you know, some of us here are, some people here are already struggling to pay their taxes. So, you know, will they lose their homes because we're trying to create homes for other people? Which I'm not saying we shouldn't. I don't mean that at all. But I'm just, I'm really, really concerned about how this is going to impact the County of Halliburton.
Cheryl, Michelle, your hand, okay.
Thank you. And through the chair, so just to provide some greater context, a couple of things that have been raised. Um, and I apologize that we haven't more clearly defined some of the definitions of deeply affordable, affordable. So when we talk about deeply affordable housing, we are really talking and looking across kind of income brackets in our community. And so when we are referring to people in deeply affordable housing or who need deeply affordable housing, we really are talking about individuals who are kind of in that fortieth income percentile and lower. Um, and then when we're talking about affordable housing, and that is actually very clearly defined now by the province through some changes in the Development Charges Act and the associated schedule to go with that, it really is households then at that sixtieth income percentile. So anything though above households in that sixtieth income percentile, that's certainly not our role as service manager. And again, as we're trying to establish this new strategy, we know we're going to make the biggest impact in wellness for our community if we focus on those with that lowest income, who are needing that deeply affordable housing, who are, most of them already here. Um, and because of those affordability challenges, their wellness is really severely impacted and probably currently straining the system more. And would potentially there be some reprieve if we can get them in the right sort of housing?
Go ahead.
Okay, then can you explain to the public where the money comes for the subsidizing for the geared to rent income? For the, for the difference that the tenant cannot pay? Where does that money come from? Does that not come from the County of Halliburton and City of Cortha Lakes ratepayers?
It would be all part of the financial modeling that we'd be doing. We'd be obviously waiting for any contribution, but we know that's often the reality too. That doesn't
Counselor
Yeah, I, I can't disagree with anything that my fellow counselors have said. And yet at the same time, I also agree with the information that you've presented to us in terms of the condition of where we are. I think the biggest problem that we're all struggling with is the cost. The cost is where the problem is and at this point in time, we seem to be looking at it. It'll be taken on by taxpayers in one way, shape or form. Uh, I was at the OEMC last week and this is not a problem that's unique to us. It is a problem right across the entire eastern Ontario. And one of the things that I found when we were there is the private sector developers are now totally aware of this. They have their ear to the ground on funding that may or may not be available that would assist in this kind of thing. One of the things that, that I, I find that we're probably not doing as much as we should is, is working with these people to look at where, what it was, if it was not feasible to build from a private sector point of view two years ago. I personally believe that's no longer the case. I think with, with, with the way things are growing and the amount of, of pressure that's being placed on, on everybody to, to make more affordable housing, it is, it is something that, that we should be looking at. So I think that not only should we be looking at what we're doing here as municipal governments, but we should also be figuring out how we can contact and work with private sector developers to get them to come in here and to, to, to provide the stock. Because without the stock, we can't do anything. You, you can't subsidize rent or do anything if there ain't nothing there to put people into. The other things which have been brought forward obviously are there, which is, which is a support infrastructure in terms of, you know, healthcare. All those things are real, that there's no question about that. But at this point in time, I think we're, we're, we know that's going to happen. We'll have to deal with that when it happens. But at the end of the day, from what I'm hearing, it's at least a two to five year program to just get a program together with private sector people to build stuff. And so if we're not doing that, then, then we're going to be talking about this ten, fifteen years from now and we're not going to be any further ahead. So my personal opinion is we should be able to start looking at possibly reaching out to private sector developers. When I, when I went around and spoke to the, to the people that were there, many of the private sector developers are interested in what we're doing. Does that mean they're going to come to the table with a check or any, that's, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is they're interested in looking at working the possible arrangement with, with anyone like us. So I think it's something we should look into. Who should look into it? I don't know. Whether it should be, you know, the, the people that are here today, whether it should be part of of, of a county council, I don't know. But one thing's for sure, it's an opportunity that we are, we have to investigate.
Cheryl?
Yes, if I can through you to Counselor Ryle. That is one of the things, so this past year, we have also done a operational review of our housing services, uh, including that of the whole division for housing services and the Cortha Lakes Halliburton Housing Corporation. And as those that are a part of the joint advisory committee have been hearing and had presented to them some of the recommendations of that fully aligned with what Counselor Ryle is saying. We internally have not had the capacity to do the housing development. It has actually rested within the housing corporation's mandate for the last couple of years. They are a housing service provider in their own, as Counselor Carter had indicated, they have eight hundred and twenty-one units. However, as the service manager, we need to be looking at it from a regional development perspective. And how do we do and forecast some of those other initiatives and opportunities to do development? So understanding what the pipeline might look like, do we have land available? Do we have the actual servicing available? This is where the collaboration, the shared collaboration approach needs to come in. We need to work with the county and the area municipalities with your planners, your developers to understand what is available. Can we make this work? But we also needed staff at the service managers to be able to do that role. And we have now, uh, last year, we carved off some opportunity to establish a role for that and build some capacity. So we can maybe start off slowly. So that'll be shifting out of the housing corporation and back to where it should fit within the regional system planning component. So that's a piece. I'm not saying it will be a full solution, but it's something we need to explore for sure. Um, and then how do we get that into policy? So that we can actually look when developers come in to do development in our regions, how can we carve off a policy to say, if you're not going to donate a certain portion of those units to be affordable, then give us a cash contribution to put towards building affordable. So there's some policy development that we can also do to do that. So I appreciate you raising that. We have to think outside of the box to do this differently.
I have Counselor McKechnie and then I have Counselor Dayu and I'll come back to Counselor Ryle.
Yeah, thanks, Warden. Yeah, thanks for the presentation. Lots of information. And I, I have a totally different, not totally different because different counselors have brought it up kind of. But I'm, maybe my approach is a little rough, rough edge around the edges. But to me, this is a great example. But to me, this is a great example of us Canadians opening our eyes. Look at the issues that these young, these ladies have presented us today with, just in our backyard. This is going on all across Canada. I I think it's time, and I I don't know how we do it, but every day I I read my phone, I read the news on my phone. We gave 60 million here, we gave a billion dollars here. We gave billions of dollars to this. I I'm just so fed up with it. When it's timely, our federal government especially, and addresses the issues that we have at home here. And this is a prime example of it. And like I say, there's hardly a morning goes by or a week goes by that there isn't a large amount of money given somewhere. God bless those people. I I'd give the shirt off my back to people, just like most Canadians would. But we got to take care of our own people at home here. And we always have money for for that, but your your presentation was great. If we had if we had the money, it would work and it would help. And and this, and like I say, this is going on all across Canada, not just in our own backyards. I mean, our taxpayers are in in DICEART alone. I mean, we have major infrastructure issues coming up, like millions of dollars. And I'm sure every one of the other municipalities also have. And like I say, I just can't emphasize enough. And maybe I'm wrong, but I'll I'll believe it right to the end. The feds always seem to have money for whoever they seem to be. Or I don't know why, they just write checks to people that what about our people at home? And this is a prime example. Thanks for your time.
Counselor Dayu.
Thanks. Yeah, there's a lot of consistency around the table, and I I won't repeat what's been said. I agree with the vast majority of what's been said. I think for me, the the real fear is the sheer amount of money that we don't really understand the return of investment on. And that's where I think the financial projections would be would be good. Obviously, there's a social return on investment. Wonderful. I agree with that. Don't have to be convinced of that. I'm not referring to that. It's how this model works financially, where the, as preaching to the converted, our tax base here at county and township level are property taxes. So we're we're looking at asking the people at the market housing end of this housing continuum to fund the the huge other left side of it, the the emergency transitional supportive and deeply affordable housing out of their property taxes. And I don't know the connective piece. How does that investment financially come back to our county? Because we are literally dependent on property taxes to survive. So I get to to Jessie's point. She said she didn't want to bang bang our heads with it. I think she should continue to bang our heads with it. The advocacy, I think this advocacy has to play a big role here. Because this is an issue, and now I, you know, I do risk repeating what other people have said. But this is an issue that's beyond our control, and it's beyond our property tax driven means to resolve. So this has to go hand in hand with higher orders of government. I agree with Counselor Carter said, you know, there's really only one taxpayer at the end of the day. The challenge is, though, that as the township and county, we can't rely on on income tax. We don't even have a commercial and industrial, like a high commercial industrial component to our 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 county from which to draw at at a reasonable proportion to fund some of these massive issues. We're really talking about people who own cottages, you know, to fund to fund this this tremendous requirement of income or of of investment, sorry. So, yeah, it's frightening. I think, though, if we were to paint any any graphic on our wall from now until, you know, the next 10 years, it would be the graphic presented in the presentation of what the the impact would be if we do business as usual versus maintenance versus reduction. Because if we don't remember what business as usual looks like 10 years out, we are going to be in a massive pickle here. So we've got to keep bearing that in mind, too.
Counselor Ryle.
Yeah, just to follow back up on the private sector piece that I was speaking about. One of the things that that came forward from from other municipalities is that if you can get a range of of pricing, that would be, let's say, for the sake of argument, we pick a number between 300 and 500,000 dollars. And you say, well, for the average homeless person, that's not affordable. But there's a lot of people that don't have homes because they there aren't any. There aren't any that are less than 600 or 700,000 dollars, and that number is just not there. So at the end of the day, if we could convince people that that know more about building houses than I do, that that we could have house stock built between a 300 and a 500,000 dollar number. I think the next thing we need to do is to talk to CHMC, the people who finance the the overall cost. That's no tax dollars there. That is a a basic cost of buying a home. And at the end of the day, if if somehow or another we could convince them that income driven is not a bad way to set, provided, I mean, they could put all kinds of great and wonderful applications and forms and every other thing that qualifies people to make sure that they can get a reduced interest rate. But if they get a reduced interest rate, the net 300 to 500 dollar home now becomes viable. Not because it's less than that, but because they don't have to pay it per month. And everybody's got the problem of how much money do I have at the end of the month? But I take, by the time I take everything else out of it. So I I'm still pushing towards that. And and if 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 something that that all all councils can do, whether it's ours or anybody else, is to talk to people like the CMHC and tell them that there is a problem out there. Income's an issue. So is there a way we could set up some kind of a of a reduction for for low income people for interest rates?
Counselor Danison and Counselor Carter.
I really do look forward to seeing the financial projections and and, you know, how we're going to move forward with this. And and I would like to see some options about, okay, so what if we can't do this within a 10 year period? What if it's going to take us 15 years or 20 years? And 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 how that would impact us? I I also, just to reiterate a point that I made earlier, I would like to see some work done on a very, very strong agreement between the service manager and the county being partners as opposed to, you know, just contributors. I think that's a very important need, and I I also think we need to look very strongly when we're talking about the cost of housing. And and we're talking about standard housing here. I think we really need to start concentrating on prefabricated units, tiny houses. You know, for for some of the of the folks that we're talking about, there's some pretty spiffy tiny houses out there these days that that offer everything that a single homeless individual would need and beyond that. So, you know, that can bring the cost of housing down considerably, and I think that's something we really need to be looking at.
Counselor Carter.
Yeah, I think everybody needs to understand that our our real challenge is on the operating costs. And when we look at a a project at the housing corporation or or at Habitat for Humanity that I'm involved in, you know, our situation of being able to build, getting the money for the capital is we don't have a challenge on that. We can borrow the money from Infrastructure Ontario. And the reason why, you know, public and private has been different is that publicly, we can acquire money at a much lower rate than the private industry can. So that's that's one thing. But if we get a project and the project is going to cost us, pick a number, 10 million dollars to do. We then go out and we do talk to CMHC, and we do talk to the provincial government, and we talk to anybody who will listen that will potentially give us money. Okay, so if they give us money, well, that means our 10 million dollars is now, you know, 8 million that we have to that we have to finance. At the end of the day, once we finance the project, then you have to pay your principal and interest. It's like a mortgage. Every month you got to pay some money. So we take the amount of money it's going to cost us to pay back the the principal and interest, how much money it's going to cost us to operate the building, and then what are the rents that we're getting in? Okay, the if it's operating at a loss, you know, it we then have to go to the city or the county and say, hey, we need we need money because this is rent geared to income. We need we need money to balance that out. Well, do we have the money here at the at the county to be able to afford that? And a lot of projects that come to us die because you can do the the back of the envelope pro forma and recognize that, you know, we don't have the money to be able to build this. In addition, here, you know, we're going to be, I'm sure, at budget time, talking about community paramedics. And we're going to probably be talking about our programs to support to get in medical professionals into the area. So and like we talked about infrastructure and so on. So we're not only looking at the money we need to for the housing, we're looking at all the other things. And that's the 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 importance of how it affects our our budget. It's the operating cost. Building them, no problem. You can get the money to build it. But can we afford to keep, you know, paying for it as as we go forward? So this is, you know, this is what we need to look at in in any of our our projections of the finances is how are we going to pay the operating costs, which are not necessarily going to remain stable because they, you know, they can escalate over time.
I am going to encourage counsel to receive the presentation. I would like us to gather more information and have quite a bit of further discussion on it. Gary.
With your indulgence, Warden, I have a crap based on the comments, I have crafted a recommendation for council's consideration.
Go ahead.
That the presentation deeply affordable supportive housing strategy be received, and further that county council and our strategic priorities identified in the housing strategy in principle, and further that is recommended to the City of Coorthlakes Council, that city staff be directed to bring forward detailed cost financial forecasts for second quarter 2026 for further review and consideration.
Could have someone move Counselor Carter, second by Counselor Ferry. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your honest opinions. And it's not opinions, it's reality. And so I do appreciate the conversation. And it's, it was said here many times, this is a complex issue on top of everything we as municipalities have to plan for for the long range. And I know we have an election next next year, which of course, how do we want to set the way for that next council coming in as well? And so at least this is in time for that, and we will look forward to bringing you back those financial. I'm not sure if I look forward to that, but we will bring back the financial modeling. So thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Counselor.
Sorry, I just, in addition to the City of Coorthlakes doing financial modeling, I think we need to do some of our own. You know, when we look at, you know, what's being anticipated, that we need to figure out how we're going to fit that into our existing budget. And I look forward to projections coming from our finance department.
Gary.
Thank you, Warden, to Counselor Deputy Warden Danison. That's part of the equation. The information we'll be providing to the City of Coorthlakes and their staff with respect to those type of costs directly related to the program, but also to Counselor Carter's point with respect to all the other services that make up part of the community wellness piece as well.
Okay, Counsel, I would entertain a 15 minute break. Good, thank you. Called meeting back to order. Um, delegations none, uh, the consent agenda.
Uh, that items listed under the heading consent agenda for September 24th, 2025 be adopted as presented.
If someone move, Counselor Carter, second by Counselor Shell. All in favor? It's carried. Um, considerations of reports, Office of the C A O, Community Safety and Wellbeing, September 2025 status update. Sue, welcome.
Good morning, Warden Burton and members of council. Before you is a bi-monthly community safety and wellbeing status report for September 2025. The last general CSWB report came forward in May with July's status report focusing on the newly launched seniors active living center program. So today's report looks at some of the regular activity that has happened over the summer with a look at programming and projects to come. A few report highlights today. Uh, Halliburton County's community outreach program has continued to meet weekly throughout Halliburton County to meet residents where they are at with support and services. Currently, the team, which is made up of service providers, offering everything from community paramedic services, housing supports, heat and hydro help, record suspensions, hepatitis C testing and mental health support, meets outside of the courthouse in Minden on Court Day, outside of the Minden Community Food Center and Wolverforce Food Bank, and with permission from community members for which we are grateful, outside of the Village Barn. New outreach locations will be determined as the winter months come. The outreach team meets quarterly to discuss the program and any changes that need to be made. Two exciting new programs in Halliburton County include the CMHA HKPR Mental Health Walk-in Clinic in Minden at the Health Hub at 6 McPherson Street, which began last week and offers timely access to mental health support for individuals age 16 and older on Thursdays from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And the coming full circle Ripple Program brings drop-in programs with a group of peer support specialists with lived experience in mental health and substance use, helping to fill the gaps in Halliburton County. They will be in Minden at the food center at 24 Newcastle Street on Fridays and in Halliburton at the drop-in location at Unit 7A, 83 Maple Avenue, or as some of us know, the former Chase Place on Wednesdays, with plans for further outreach to Wolverforce and a location to be determined in Algonquin Highlands. This initiative is for ages 16 plus and is supported by CMHA HKPR and point in time through a funding contribution from Health Canada's Substance Use and Addictions Program. These outreach programs are all helping to bring services and supports to residents in a more accessible, timely and compassionate way and are also connecting service providers to each other to identify barriers and work towards solutions to offer best supports. A second annual service providers expo is planned for October 9th at the Minden Community Center. Last year's event brought more than 70 service providers together from throughout the region to meet together, share information and form even stronger connections in the work they do throughout the community. We've heard from numerous partners who have been looking forward to this event again, and we are hoping it is as helpful this year as it was last year. The event is not open to the public, but counselors are welcome to come for the day's workshop or to drop in to learn more. A third community supports and ID clinic has been organized for October 30th at the Halliburton Legion from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. I apologize for the, the small writing on this poster, but that's how much involvement there is from the community this time around. Free transportation will be provided to the clinic by partners at Triple H S and no appointments are necessary. This event was first held last fall with another taking place in the spring. And this third event was actually initiated, initiated by our partners at Service Ontario so that we can coordinate the event with their mobile unit schedule, bringing improved services offered at the event. Specifically, uh, the availability of the photo ID card service alongside other services that will be in one place this, this day without a need to further transport residents to the Minden location and back, making the event even more barrier free. Service Canada, Service Ontario and almost 20 community partners will be at the event to see any residents dropping in. And since the poster was created, we have also been connected to the outreach lead of energy programs at Enviro Center who work to make homes more energy efficient for homeowners or renters, and they plan to be in attendance as well. It should be noted that passport services are not available at this event, but the Halliburton County Public Library is hosting Service Canada specific outreach on October 21st that would include that service. This event is designed to support the most vulnerable residents in the county, but is open to all. Um, also in October, the annual Halliburton County Housing Summit hosted by Places for People, the County of Halliburton and other partners will be held on October 16th at the Minden Community Center. The opening keynote speaker is Dr. Brian Doucette, who will speak to the research underlying his recent documentary, Thinking Beyond the Market. Uh, that film will be shown Wednesday night, October 15th at the Minden Hills Cultural Center at 7:00 p.m. The closing keynote speakers are Joe and Stephanie Mancini, entrepreneurs from Kitchener who over several decades have engaged their fellow business people in building the kind of facilities In between event goers, we'll hear two panels about local progress toward building the housing we need and housing support. Seniors Active Living Centre programs continue throughout the fall with partners offering so many programs throughout Halliburton County. A highlight here to mention is that the county is now offering two SLC-related webinars. So, we hosted two last month with the Alzheimer's Society of Peterborough, Coortle Lakes, Halliburton and also Austroprocess Canada, thanking the county's IT team for their support facilitating these online education sessions. Next month, we are hosting a webinar on senior services in partnership with Service Canada and a webinar on renewal of license for residents 80 and older in partnership with the Ministry of Transportation of Ontario. In-person education sessions are still being planned by community partners, but these webinars enable residents to attend online where that is perhaps more accessible to them. And finally, as noted in the report, over the next several months, we are coordinating reviews and updates of several plans. The county's annual Joint Accessibility Plan update, which we work on in partnership with our local municipalities and which will come to the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee in December and to County Council in the new year. The Community Safety and Plesing Act 2019 requires that Ontario municipalities review and, if appropriate, renew or revise their community safety and wellbeing plans every four years. For many communities, including ours, these renewed plans are due in 2026. The CSWB advisory table has opted to review, revise and amend the plan where necessary for next spring. We have been invited by the Canadian Centre for Safer Communities to join an exclusive community of practice event in October where representatives from Ontario municipalities and communities can discuss this update, focusing on plan evaluation, experiences, needs, good practices, lessons learned and access to toolkits and free resources. And the local Halliburton Highlands OPP Detachment Action Plan will be reviewed and updated by the detachment commander with support of the Halliburton Highlands OPP Detachment Board through feedback from the community as shared with us through a recent survey. So, community safety and wellbeing related work has continued throughout the summer and the upcoming months see much happening related to CSWB-related projects and programming and plan updates. Happy to take any questions you might have at this time.
Thanks, Sue. Very much, councillor Danielson.
Just one comment. Thanks for the extensive report. Good work. And I know this is not your doing, but I was a little bit disappointed to see that the housing summit, which has been really excellent in the, you know, the last two summits that they've put on, is being held on a council day for Algonquin Highlands, which means that no members of council or staff can attend tonight. I would just hope that in the future they would think about council days and, because they're important partners in trying to establish housing.
Councillor Ryle?
First off, thank you very much for what you're doing. And as you probably know, your activity sheet that you give out, I got rid of almost all of them. I have very few left. And can I get some more?
Yes, so the Seniors Active Living Centre calendars have been very popular throughout the community. I have, when possible, been hand-delivering them myself and the feedback from the community. You're not the only one looking for them when they come out. I can't actually go into some places now without people looking for them, even when it's not time for them yet. So it's been really exciting, that response from the community and how excited people are to to get involved in that program. I don't have any on me yet, but they are coming very soon.
Other questions or comments? Resolution?
That staff report CSWB 052025, Community Safety Wellbeing Update, Status Update, September 2025 be received.
If someone move, councillor Daye, second by councillor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Thanks, Sue. Corporate Services, Public Works, Public Works Work Plan, September Update.
Morning, Warden Burton and members of council. Today is the Public Works September Work Plan Update. I'm just going to go over a few highlights from the last report. Our capital projects for roads, our surface treatment is substantially complete. The only thing left is the pavement markings to be done, which we're hoping for next week for those. The rejuvenation was complete on 1 and 16 as well. And then finally, the new bridge on Potash Lake is finished as of yesterday and reopened, so that's a good news thing. For operations, we're preparing for winter maintenance, equipment and along the roadways as well, just opening catch basins and making sure everything's getting ready for the winter season, which is hopefully not approaching too quick. We're also doing some major mechanical brushing along our roadways and some patching in certain areas. For engineering, the pavement marking contract or project will be starting next week for all our road markings. And also the always stop at 14 and 6 will be, hopefully by the end of next week, will be installed and operational. So we'll put out a public notice and it's going to be on our website and advertise that it's going to be hopefully by the end of next week. And our facilities, our construction of our new salt shed at Patrol 2 will start on the 29th of September, next week. And we're currently applying some new grinders to the rail trail as well in certain areas, so that's ongoing. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions? Mary?
This is really a question. I'm fishing for information here. I know the county washes the salt off their trucks, and I don't know what kind of equipment you need, but with trucks going from $350,000 to over $500,000, we've got to figure out a way of making them last a year or two longer. And the reason they don't last is if they're not cleaned, the bottom end all rots and the frames are gone and you have to trade them. So what kind of equipment do you need to do that?
Well, it's, I don't think it's special equipment. It's just spending time, applying water and not doing it too quick.
Do you want it a year or do you do it?
Oh, no. Ours are rinsed after every outing.
Okay.
They're brought in, they're rinsed off and then put to bed for drying and prepared for next outing. We also treat our plow trucks, all our equipment, undercoating. The plow trucks are done twice a year and the rest of our fleet is done at least once a year.
Thank you. That's good information.
Are the, so is the oil you use on them?
Yes. Yeah, it's, I can't remember the name of the product, but it's like a crown type product that we put.
Liz?
On the winter maintenance agreements, I've noted in the past that there is a pretty large stretch in the rates between the different municipalities, and I just kind of wonder why that is. I would have thought that it would be, we would be able to come up with something that's a little more standardized.
Yes, I think the maturity of the agreements are fairly close. I think there might be maybe one municipality that's a little bit outside of the norm for the agreements. It's just a cost recovery, so it's, we're just getting the cost of by the municipality for providing that service or vice versa. And they'll be coming in October for council approval.
Other questions? Resolution? Well, go ahead. Sorry.
So just give me a quick update, please, on the County Road 614 there, the four-way stop, if you could, please. I know people are going to be asking me.
Yes, we're hoping that by the end of next week, we'll have a date, a specific date. We're just trying to organize the installation of the signs and the flashing light and line markings for a specific day next week. So we're hoping by next week that it'll be, everything will be installed and functional and operational as well as informing the OPP, local detachment of the change.
Thank you very much.
Other questions? Resolution?
That staff report PWS 1725, Public Works September Update be received for information.
If someone move, councillor Carter, second by councillor Ferry. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Planning, planning department, work plan update?
Thank you, Warden. One of the first things council may notice about the report is that the normally separate Land Division Committee update report contents have been incorporated into the department update report for purposes of efficiency. With respect to the last two Land Division Committee meetings, a total of five applications were heard, bringing the annual total of applications brought to committee to 35. Submissions are up and at this time there are six applications on deck just for the October meeting and TBD on what November and December might bring. In other development planning matters, the next item on the agenda is the draft approvals of a five-lot non-residential plan of subdivision and condominium for council's consideration. Additionally, draft plans of subdivision and condominium have been submitted in support of a proposal for a 63-lot subdivision in the rural area of the municipality of Daisart. At this time, the applications are not yet deemed complete as formal comments by way of municipal council resolution are forthcoming, but the meeting for which occurred yesterday. Per the county's official plan, these municipal comments are required in order to deem applications complete and begin the processing of them. Given the lack of support for the applications from Daisart Council, staff will be reaching out to the applicants to confirm how or whether they wish to proceed with the processing of the formal applications at the county shortly. Switching gears, over the course of 2025, county and local municipal planning staff have been working on creating a revised consent application processing procedure that ensures not only the interests of the local municipalities and county are maintained, but also that a high level of customer service and efficiency is achieved. Once a revised process has been jointly agreed upon between all planning departments, the proposed process will be brought to all five councils for consideration. With respect to policy and special projects, particularly of note is the full presentation and rollout of the LiDAR mapping coming in October. County staff are putting together an interface that makes the information as accessible to the average individual as possible. Municipal staff will have access to the data in the next week or so to start referencing the data in their daily work and planning staff are in discussions regarding application of the mapping when the old 80s and 90s mapping is enshrined currently in zoning, et cetera, at the local municipalities and how that will work. Additionally, both an information report on communal servicing as well as a proposal for a PPS conformity official plan amendment are also intended to be brought to council before year end. With respect to the shoreline bylaw portfolio, permit applications are down. However, inquiries and complaint investigation instances have been steady over the past few months with quite a few active complaints still open and being investigated. Lastly, I'm pleased to share that the county's new senior planner, Kim Bishop, formerly Roberts, starts in the role on Monday. Kim will focus on the development portfolio while also aiding in a variety of policy and special projects, including the climate change portfolio. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions council may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Questions? Councillor Danielson?
One comment and one question. I did have a call on the weekend about tree cutting. It was not in Algonquin Highlands. It was in Minden Hills, but I was very impressed with the rapid response that I got. And I just wanted to let you know that they, you know, on a Saturday afternoon, to see somebody go immediately and check out the concern was really appreciated. I did have a question about the development charges. And I understood from when we had the development charges presentation and explaining to us what was involved in that process. I understood that the consultant was going to be going to the lower-tier municipalities and explaining the process to them, what's involved and what the impact is. Just wondering, you know, from the way this is worded, how much work is going to be done on behalf of the municipalities the county is going to be paying for?
Through you, Warden. I believe particularly the meeting scheduled for mid-October is an info gathering session. So just, I believe Watson has some questions to just get some local knowledge and information that will help feed the process through the local treasurers and CAOs. And for that meeting, it's included in the county budget for the project.
Any questions? Resolution?
That staff report PLN 162025, Plane Department Work Plan Update, sorry. Turn my page. Yes, it was. Yeah. Be received for information.
If someone move, councillor Danielson, second by Deputy Mayor Ryle, councillor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried. Draft approval of plan of subdivision Campbell?
Thank you, Warden. The purpose of today's presentation is to provide an overview of a proposed plan of subdivision and plan of condominium description submitted on behalf of the landowners LRC Campbell Limited, located within the village of Halliburton. In my present, sorry, in my presentation today, I will summarize the proposal, the planning analysis and the recommendation for the applications. The subject lands are approximately 3.67 hectares in size with approximately 38 metres of frontage on Mallard Road. The lands are located in the northwest area of the service settlement area of Halliburton. The property is currently partially used for vehicle storage in support of the automotive dealership to the south. The remainder of the lands are vacant and well-vegetated. Surrounding land uses include the aforementioned automotive dealership to the south, a grocery store to the east, vacant land to the west and various light industrial uses to the north. The development proposal consists of five lots intended for future commercial or light industrial development, which are identified in green, and one block for the purpose of a common element condominium road to facilitate access to the property shown in blue. Through an existing right-of-way, access will be available to the development from the south as well as an access directly from Mallard Road to the north. With respect to servicing, the subject property is located within the service settlement area of Halliburton Village and as such, future development is proposed to be serviced with private individual wells and full municipal sewer services as the Halliburton Settlement area is a single-service community. The sewer service will extend from County Road 21 north through the property to the south, to the southern boundary of the property of the subject property via an easement, then extend north through the subject property to service each lot. As part of the municipality's review and in accordance with comments received from the local health unit, the provision of a multi-use trail through the subject lands has also been included as a condition of draft approval. It's proposed that the particulars of how each lot will be developed will be addressed through site plan control, the site plan control process applicable to each of the properties in the future. A variety of technical studies were submitted in support of the applications and peer-reviewed by a third party as necessary. The submitted planning justification report further describes the proposed development includes a detailed policy analysis in support of the proposal. In response to comments from the engineering peer reviewers' evaluations of the provided reports, an addendum was provided in June 2024 to clarify matters regarding the condominium block and sewage servicing. A stage one and two archaeological assessment was submitted to the Ministry of Heritage Tourism, Sport and Culture Industries for registry. The assessment, which included fieldwork, confirmed that no archaeological materials were found. The report was accepted by the ministry with no further review as required. To support the application, the applicant has submitted a phase one and two environmental site assessment reports prepared by Geologic Inc. that were completed in October 2012 to evaluate the property for potential environmental issues and identify any areas of potential environmental concern. The phase one report recommended further investigation, leading to the completion of a phase two assessment. The findings of the phase two assessment concluded that there is a low level of concern from an environmental perspective. and the property is suitable for its intended use. Further, Geological advised that no further testing or investigation would be warranted. Given this determination, there are no apparent concerns regarding soil or groundwater contamination from past activities. An environmental impact study prepared by Mekelski Nielsen provides a description of the existing conditions on the subject lands, an examination of the potential impacts on identified natural heritage features and functions, and a species-at-risk habitat assessment. There is potential species, or there is potential presence of at-risk bird species and three endangered bat species utilizing some of the trees on site. However, the report concludes that the proposed development will have minimal impact on this potential habitat, provided that the recommendations of the report related to species at risk are appropriately implemented. Additionally, the EIS identified a small wetland inclusion on the subject property covering less than point two hectares within proposed lot two. However, this feature appears to be artificially created due to past land stripping activities, and intermittent drainage from upstream areas has been concentrated in this area by previous earthworks, resulting in temporary shallow water pooling that dries in the spring. The water levels and flow are insufficient to support amphibian breeding even in early spring, and the area lacks any significant ecological value. Given this anthropogenic, anthropogenic origin and absence of natural heritage significance, the reports are author determined that this area does not warrant protection. The EIS confirms that with the implementation of the recommended mitigation measures, no negative impacts will occur as a result of the proposed development. The hydrogeological servicing study prepared by Palmer Environmental confirms that groundwater resources are adequate to meet the needs of future development, with additional assessments needed for cases of higher water demand uses if proposed in the future. The functional servicing report by Pinestone Engineering addressed both water and sewage service for the subject lands as well as fire suppression measures. The report concludes that the proposed development can be serviced by individual private wells as well as gravity municipal sewer services extended north from County Road twenty-one. Detailed design and confirmation of servicing capacity will be required prior to the construction of the sewer services. The report further outlines that any firefighting needs of the individual properties can either be drafted bought from nearby Grass Lake or onsite tank storage with dry hydrant connections could be provided for each lot with a storage volume based on the size and type of building proposed to the satisfaction of Dicart's fire department. Through the site plan control process for development of each lot, the appropriate method to be implemented will be determined. A stormwater management and construction mitigation plan was also submitted by Pinestone Engineering in support of the proposed subdivision. The stormwater from both the common element block as well as the individual lots will be directed to ditching within the common element block designed to accommodate the hundred-year rate runoff flows. Additionally, based on the analysis and findings of the report, the following conclusions were also reached. To mitigate impacts, parking lot storage or stormwater management ponds have been proposed to attenuate post-development flows to pre-development levels on a lot-by-lot basis. Stormwater quality enhancement from the receiving storm sewer system will be achieved using a treatment train approach, which includes parking lot or pond storage, installation of oil grit separator units, and appropriate construction mitigation measures. And any site-specific design details will be required as part of the site plan agreement process for the development of each lot. On October, when it comes to municipal agency and public comments, on October twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, the notice of complete application was circulated to all required agencies and adjacent property owners in accordance with the Planning Act. A sign was also posted on the subject lands. Through this circulation, one member of the public sought additional details about the proposal, and no other public comments or concerns were received. The municipality provided comments on March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, which indicated that they are supportive of the proposed draft plans of subdivision and condominium, provided that the requested conditions of approval are implemented. No comments were received from other county or municipal departments. The Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks advised that there are generally no concerns. However, it was indicated that the owner may require provincial approval for stormwater as discharge will occur into the natural environment. In their comments, the Halliburton Cortha Pineridge District Health Unit encouraged active transportation and minimization of hard surface treatments and other recommendations. And any comments received have been appropriately implemented through the proposed conditions of draft approval. To determine the appropriateness of the proposed applications, a thorough policy review was conducted. The provincial policy statement provides for appropriate development while protecting resources of provincial interest, public health and safety, and the quality of the natural and built environment. The PPS directs that settlement areas such as Halliburton Village should be the focus of growth and development within a municipality. With respect to municipal servicing, the PPS states that municipal sewage services and municipal water services are the preferred form of servicing for settlement areas to support protection of the environment and minimize potential risks to human health and safety. The PPS further outlines that where municipal, where municipal services are not available, planned or feasible, individual onsite services may be used provided that site conditions are suitable for the long-term provision of such services with no negative impacts. Given that Halliburton Village does not have municipal water service, the proposed subdivision will be serviced by municipal sewage infrastructure while individual lots will rely on private wells for water supply. The PPS also emphasizes the protection of natural heritage features and habitats for endangered and threatened species. As noted earlier, a small wetland feature was identified on the subject property. Ever it was determined to have minimal ecological value and is likely due to past site alteration. A variety of potential species at risk habitats were also identified. However, the report concludes that the proposed development will have minimal impacts. Therefore, the applications as proposed are generally, generally consistent with the provincial policy state, sorry, provincial planning statement. As it relates to the county's official plan, the lands are designated as urban settlement area where development is to be focused and continued growth is anticipated by providing for a range of uses that can meet long-term needs of the community. Additionally, while the OP does not designate employment lands specifically, the plan prioritizes the protection and preservation of employment lands for existing and future uses. With respect to natural heritage features and their functions, the official plan directs that development and site alteration shall not occur within or adjacent to areas of significance without the provision of an EIS that confirms no negative impacts would occur on these features as a result of development. The OP also directs that archaeological assessments are required if development is proposed in an area of potential archaeological significance. As noted earlier, the assessment found no areas of archaeological potential were identified. Lastly, the OP contains policies regulating development near waste management sites, requiring that site applications within five hundred meters of a waste disposal site provide a waste disposal site compatibility report in support of a development proposal. The northeast corner of the subject property is approximately four hundred and ninety meters from the southwest corner of the Halliburton landfill. However, the portion of land within the five hundred meter buffer is negligible, consisting of only the northernmost section of the proposed common element condominium block and a minor portion of lot one. Given the presence of Mallard Road as a buffer, the nature of the common element road and the lot configuration, no structures would be proposed in this area, and as such, the intent of the policy is maintained, and it has been determined that a waste disposal site compatibility report was not required. Accordingly, the proposal conforms to the County of Halliburton official plan. The Dicart official plan designates the lands as employment areas, business park, and are located within the Halliburton Village urban policy area. Lands within this designation are contemplated to provide employment opportunities which focus on a mix of light industrial or commercial uses. The municipal OP directs that new lots must be a size and shape suitable for accommodating the contemplated land uses while also factoring in any constraints or features that may exist. As part of the development process, the lots will be subject to site plan control to ensure the appropriate development of each lot, including the implementation of the recommendations of any applicable technical studies. With respect to zoning, the subject lands are currently zoned highway commercial in the Dicart zoning bylaw. The permitted uses in this zone include a variety of commercial and light industrial uses that either require larger lot areas to accommodate the uses or provide for uses that serve the traveling public. As a condition of draft plan approval, the proposed subdivision will require a zoning bylaw amendment to recognize the lot frontages on a condominium road rather than a municipally maintained road. Further, the municipality may consider implementing a holding provision on the lands to ensure that key development requirements are met before construction on individual lots proceeds. This approach ensures that development occurs in an orderly phased manner in accordance with municipal policies and regulatory requirements. With all that being said, the proposal conforms to the Dicart official plan and generally complies to the Dicart zoning bylaw as well. So as a result of the comprehensive review of the applications, staff are recommending that Plan of Subdivision File forty-six T twenty-three zero zero one and Plan of Condominium File forty-six CE twenty-three zero zero two be conditionally approved, subject to the recommended conditions contained within Schedules A and B to the Associate Staff Report. And on that note, I should point out that the recommendation in the staff report does not mention Schedule B. However, Schedule B should be included in the resolution for council's consideration as it appears on the slide to reflect the proposed conditions associated with the plan of condominium description. And with all that, I would be happy to answer any questions council may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Questions? Resolution? After all that.
I'm sorry. Flashback to being a planner. That staff report PLN seventeen twenty-two-five be received, and a plan of subdivision File forty-six T twenty-three zero zero one and Plan of Condominium File forty-six CE twenty-three zero zero two. In the municipality Dicart, it all be conditionally approved, subject to the recommendation, recommended conditions contained within Schedules A and B to report PLN seventeen twenty-two-five.
Could have someone move? Councilor Danielson, second by Councilor Carter. All in favor? It's carried. Proposed declaration of surplus lands?
Thank you again, Warden. County staff received a written request inquiring about the potential purchase of the waterfront lands located on the key map on your screen. The lands subject to this request have approximately sixty-seven meters of frontage on both Lakeshore Road, Township of Highlands East Road, and Goodrum Lake, and have an area of approximately six hundred and twenty square meters. The nearest county road is approximately ninety-five meters to the south, being County Road five oh three. County planning staff have reviewed the request to purchase this parcel of land from a county official plan perspective, as well as consulted with planning staff at the Township of Highlands East and County Public Works. While the county's official plan is generally silent with respect to the nature of the proposal, municipality of Highlands East staff noted that an original shore road allowance may exist along this parcel's frontage on Goodrum Lake. Through the creation of a survey for these lands, confirmation of whether the OSRA exists would be obtained. And should it exist, the proponent would be required to also purchase the OSRA from the township at the time of conveyance of the county-owned lands. Additionally, the lands would be required to be rezoned to an open space zone to permit a marine facility or dock only due to the limited size of the parcel. With respect to process, County Bylaw twenty-nine seventy-seven would be followed should council direct staff to proceed. This requires at least one appraisal to be obtained, public notice circulated, the provision of a survey, and final confirmation that no county or municipal interest exists that would be beneficial to keep the land in county ownership. Should everything be satisfactory, council would then declare the land surplus and the conveyance process could occur. Given the results of the initial review of the proposal by both county and township staff, it's recommended that staff be directed to proceed with the disposition of the property. And with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Councilor Carter?
Just two questions. One, does this end up reducing public's access to that lake? I mean, obviously, I don't see the whole lake there, but this is, if this is county land now, this would be a way for somebody to get to the lake. I'm not familiar with the property, so I don't know what it, what it looks like, but. So that was one question. And then the second question was, are you, so are you recommending to go through all the steps for the disposition? It seemed like a lot of the steps would end up costing us money and ending, selling a piece of property that's six hundred and twenty meters, it may cost us more to go through the process than it will to sell it.
Through you, Warden. Nothing in our records showed that this was a dedicated public access point. We'll, staff will absolutely look into it more, but it isn't identified on any of our internal databases as a dedicated boat launch or public access point, but we can absolutely look into that more. In terms of costs, the purchaser would be responsible for all survey costs, all appraisal costs. The only cost that would be borne to the county is the notification cost, which can be accommodated in the planning department's advertising budget.
And Bob, there is access just up around the corner. It's not on the map, but there is a park up there as well.
Oh, okay.
Councilor Danielson?
I find it interesting that that parcel of land that appears to be shore road allowance is actually owned by the county as opposed to the municipality, and I'm just interested in wondering whether a license of occupation was considered as opposed to sale.
Through you, Warden. So my understanding is there potentially is township land, township-owned land between the county parcel and the high watermark as well as the county parcel. So it could be two layers of, of public ownership occurring on this stretch of shoreline. A license of occupation was not tabled as an option. It would really depend on both the township and county willingness to enter into something like that. When this proposal was first sent to us or the inquiry, county, county staff were a little bit actually surprised that there was a county-owned parcel not connected directly to a county road, which could have been a historical oversight when lands were switching hands.
Other questions? Resolution?
That, that staff report number PLN eighteen twenty-two-five be received, and that staff be directed to proceed in accordance with County Bylaw twenty-nine seventy-seven with the disposition of the subject property.
If someone move, Councilor Shell, second by? Councilor Ferry? All in favor? It's carried. Economic Development, Draft and Investment Attraction Plan. Scott?
Good morning, Warden, and members of council, and thank you for the kind words this morning regarding the department in Lake Albert and the business attraction summit, our business summit. Just a couple items of note within the investment attraction plan presented as an appendix to you today. I'll go through a few and then I'll hint it off to manager of tourism for a couple points as well. So this was a result of the discussion we had around the service delivery review in early June or late May. And from that, it's, it's a plan that we developed internally with some, some input and suggestions from colleagues that we work with at Peterborough County and the city of Coortland Lakes. They just give us an extra set of eyes on this. So the plan does recommend that the county take a more active role in the marketing and promotion of the Stanhope Airport as an economic development asset. We do recognize that there's a very engaged advisory committee in Algonquin Highlands related to that asset, so we would work through that group as well as their council to ensure that we're receiving input from that committee of council on what we would do and how we would market that economic development asset. Additionally, there's a recommendation about creating concierge teams, both through the, the county and local township staff. I do want to note, this isn't a criticism of township staff. It's actually a rec, an acknowledgement at the county that we could probably take a more formal, formal role in that process. We've been doing it kind of on an ad hoc basis right now. The best way I really want to describe it is that your staff's time is very valuable. And we've been in, all have been in a lot of meetings where sometimes we've, we've said to ourselves that this probably could have been handled through an email. Or we've been in a meeting where the product of that is another meeting, and what we're trying to do basically is streamline that process. We can act as an intermediary, acquire information both from a perspective investor, relay that to your staff, and, and work, work both ways, really to ensure that we will bring people into the room, whether that's your planning staff, engineering staff, public works, whether that would be a CAO or a member of your council. When we're in those meetings, they're, they're productive and we've reached a point where the next steps are really defined. And it's just really a role for us that we feel that we can reduce some of the burden on your municipal staff, recognizing that they're also doing a lot related to shore role. recognizing that they're also doing a lot related to shore road, road allowances, and we just generally municipal planning. We look at it as it's essentially a one win roll approach is how we would handle it. The project does align really well, actually, with the recently announced Rural Ontario Development Program. One component of that program is it does ask that we attach any relevant strategies or plans. So we do have our economic development strategy that speaks to this. The reason that we've asked that this be attached as an appendix to that is it would just strengthen the application. And in conversations with the regional advisor, it was a recommendation that we brought it forward. And probably anticipation of a question I may get afterwards, if we were unsuccessful with the grant, you know, barring any kind of dramatic changes to our municipal budget in twenty twenty six, we would just parse back and pair out how we would deliver the program. So we'd probably look at in twenty twenty six. If we weren't successful with the grant, we'd still move forward with the concierge teams. We would still probably look at how we would market the Stanhope Airport, as well as looking at the investor summit as well. And we would update that when we present our status updates in twenty twenty six. Or if we get news sooner than that, we would just update that in our operational plan when that's presented to county council. And with that, I'm just going to pass it over to our manager of tourism, Angelica, just to speak to the other component, which is, you know, specifically targeting a branded hotel chain.
Morning, members of county council. Yeah, I'll just speak a little bit about the branded hotel component. As the manager of tourism, I've been in my role for nearly two years and a constant concern I hear in our community, especially amongst our tourism operators, is the need for more accommodations and family-friendly, larger style accommodations. We have really wonderful boutique hotels, boutique inns, smaller adult-only resorts, but we are missing, there's a bit of a gap in what we can offer for things like hockey tournaments, conference-style venues, large-scale weddings and events. We, we currently are sort of missing that piece of the puzzle. And when you're an operator looking to attract families, looking, or an organization wanting to host a hockey tournament or, or a sports event, we, we don't have a lot to offer, and that's something that we've been trying to work on. And we're really hoping this plan kind of attracts what we need, or we can start getting, hitting the ground running in that, in that area.
And with that, happy to feel any questions related to the plan or staff report. That's in for you.
Thank you, Counselor Fury.
Well, it's not a question. I just want to congratulate you. I think this is the most positive thing I've seen since I've been here this term. Because this is economic development. And we had that big, long, sad story this morning about housing. One of the ways to fix housing is to create economy, get people working, give them money. Let them have something to, to buy a house and rent a house from. So I'm really positive about this. I think I, if I, if I had my way, I'd scrap that find my way business that we're spending four hundred and fifty thousand dollars on with consultants. And I'd put the money into something like this that might prove beneficial. We all know how to find stuff with nine one one and GPS. This is ridiculous. Anyway. That's my story.
Scott, a comment?
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I was trying to, the wayfinding. Yes, okay. I, I got you there now. Only comment would be, yeah, if you, if you'd love to give us more money, we would gladly take that. We feel probably implementation and with collection of data, we could, you know, hopefully actually come back to you and we can justify that. And friendly reminder on the wayfinding, as, as I've noted, it, it would be something that we'd look at with the, the accommodation tax. And again, initiatives within this program, not to, to veer too far, would also be, you know, opportunities as that program and revenue stream grows that we could allocate funds from this to that as well. So, thank you.
Counselor Dale.
Yeah, thanks very much. A question is, would you be able to give an example or two as to the type of, of business you would like to see come in? Apart from the, the branded hotel, I get that rationale completely. But for example, in the analysis part of your report, why this matters, you say Halliburton County, and it's true, Halliburton County continues to grow, but with an aging population, this strategy aims to target economic sectors that could succeed in Halliburton to attract new investment to support the growing population. So what, what would that look like? What kind of investor would fit that need?
Through your worship. So in, in conversations, when we, we've done our business visits and, and gather additional information, we had a great conversation with Heatline. And around, you know, they're, they weren't suggesting that we, you know, actively go recruit a direct competitor to them. But really what they talked about with us was that type of kind of smaller niche manufacturing can totally succeed within Halliburton County, given our proximity to, to the GTA, Ottawa and other centers, even. I know it's a touchy subject right now, but even to the border. Those are, those are kind of the niche manufacturing that we would be looking at. Additionally, that goes part and parcel. When we talk about doing the investor summit as well as actually bringing people here is both from an external and internal business standpoint to really see who's interested in the county and how we can make that work for them and lands and locations that we can help them with.
Go ahead.
Yeah, great. That, that helps. And I suppose a follow-up question to that, based on, on what you've said, then. I like the idea of small niche manufacturers, maybe a single, single owner or a business owned by a family or whatever it might be. Is there a way of focusing on that kind of investor above and beyond, for example, a big box store or, or a major brand that just wants to come in and put another, I don't know, I, I don't want to call anybody out, but, but you know, our identity is about the local artisan, the, the ma and pa's store. It's, you know, that's where our beauty, our social beauty comes from, and it's where, it's why people, I think, want to come here is because they're, they can go to a restaurant that is owned by a local brewery and, or, or whatever it might be. So the, the caution I have is what if we put this money out and what we get back are a bunch of sort of faceless brands who want to take over our local, locally-owned economy and, you know, to their own benefit? So how does one manage that in a democratic investment strategy process?
And so the easiest way is, is probably ten or fifteen years ago, that was really challenging when a lot of marketing was done through print. So when it, when particularly in a, from a site selection standpoint, it was, you know, large-scale print publications that you really couldn't specify who was getting it. It was really just going to, you know, corporations. The ability we have now through digital marketing is we can actually be really specific about who sees it and, and who it's directed to. Also, the piece of the puzzle that will be a component of this, and an apology says if it's not outlined as clearly, like when we, we talk about, you know, a public relations campaign, would be identifying perhaps those businesses and then just specifically going to them or making sure collateral that we have is getting to them. I, I don't want to say and go in so far that we're just going to get in a car and, and drive and kind of just, you know, cold call people. But you're going to be doing that from a marketing standpoint. We just have to be specific about who we're reaching to. You know, in a previous place I worked, we had a great investment opportunity. It was, you know, a Kent Trusses came to the community, looked good on paper. You know, in time, what they ran into was, you know, they didn't have access to the, the, the physical number of employees that they needed to actually operate the, the trust manufacturing. So it's, it's, it's that piece that we have to be cognizant, cognizant of about. I, I know we talked about attracting a brand hotel, so that's, that's one piece of it. But when you're looking at attracting kind of, you know, I'll just use a niche manufacturing or something else, we have to be cognizant of the resources that we have here. You know, as Mary, as Mary Fury alerted to this morning about the, the story we heard about housing and things like that. That all has to be taken into account when we're kind of actively trying to recruit an investment opportunity, right? Do we, you know, what's our proximity, the talent pool, housing, transportation? That's all, that's a, that's all part of the puzzle.
Counselor Danielson, Counselor Ryle after.
Just with respect to the comments about assisting Algonquin Highlands in marketing of the Stanhope Airport. I, I would just, we've had some conversations with Scott, with the Counselor Dayu and myself about how that might work. And, you know, I see that as being a bit of a partnership and working together with municipal staff and possibly the airport committee. I, I would also at some risk bring up the thought that the county contributed to the Stanhope Airport for many years, as, as it is a facility that offers a service to the entire county. And I would wonder how to go about some rethinking about that particular item and, you know, whether that's something that needs to come as a request from Algonquin Highlands or whether it's something that we can consider. I don't believe it was a great amount of money. I think ten thousand dollars a year was, was what was contributed in the past. Anyway, you know, I just kind of wondered about the possibility of that because it is something that offers a service to the county. Any thoughts on that?
We can gladly provide that service to the township for a small fee.
That's not what I was asking, Mr. CAO.
Hold on. Counselor Ryle.
First off, thank you very much for the report. You know, if I can't say any more than what Counselor Ferry said, that I'm not sure if it's long overdue, but it certainly is something that we needed and, and now we've got it. Obviously, it's in the certain stages of development, so it's going to take a little bit more to go. But going back to the conversation that we had this morning, which is in relation to housing, and you're indicating that some kind of a subset of this particular project we need to look at and we handle the people. My question is, would it be, would there be enough investigation in this particular project with regards to housing? That it would be able to help us in that situation? Or do you think it's probably more likely that a separate investigation with regards to housing and options that we could have would be a little applicable way of doing this?
Sorry, through your worship. So just to clarify your, you know, you would utilize this plan kind of as a, to provide some baseline information that would support kind of future housing, you know, the county's involvement, I guess, or investment into future housing. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get, get, get an idea of where we're going with the challenge that we talked about this morning. And I appreciate we certainly can't untreat from what you're doing, but that's not an option here. But to say, okay, if, if this is going to lead to awareness in terms of detailed information and some partial due diligence, what are we going to do with that data moving with the problem that we had this morning?
Okay, through your worship. I guess the, my best response is any interaction I have with any member of the business community, probably the first comment that comes out of their mouth is just housing. We'll do our best to, you know, track data from this. And, you know, if we run up to an issue where perhaps we've, you know, we've, we've got a lead and maybe the housing becomes an issue, we can definitely share that to, to be part of that, that bigger picture. I guess would be the best answer I can give you.
Counselor Carter?
Yeah, I liked the report. I was especially enthusiastic about the shuttle service you'd be running from the airport to downtown Minden. So that's, that'd be terrific. Look, I think the, you know, as we've talked about in, in various meetings over the last couple of weeks, the whole idea on, you know, the business and the economy is we have to, we have to raise it all up together. The idea of the branded hotel, whatever, is, I think, fantastic because then we could be part of, you know, joint marketing activities for like the hockey tournaments and the, you know, I talk to people all the time saying, oh yeah, we used to go to Minden for this conference and now there's no place for the conference. And the other thing is, of course, many of the, much of the housing that we're trying to build right now is one and two bedrooms. So if you want to come up and visit mom and dad, you're going to need a place to stay. And so, you know, I think this is fantastic and, you know, let's full speed ahead.
Other questions? Murray?
One more thing. There's a big difference here. In the past and for many years, we've waited for somebody to come up here and to say to this gentleman, oh, I'd like to start something in Minden. This is going the other way around. We're asking now to bring them up here. And I think that's the difference here, and that's why this should be successful.
Thank you, Counselor. And, you know, that is the intent. Now that we've kind of got our feet under us from a departmental standpoint, really, our primary focus when I first started was just to engage with the businesses that were here and, and work with them. And now that we've kind of established those relationships and, and they know the supports are there. This is kind of the, I shouldn't say kind of, this is the next evolution in our department. So thank you.
Questions? Resolution?
That Staff Report EDT thirteen twenty twenty five Draft Investment Attraction Plan be approved, a Draft Investment Attraction Plan attached to Schedule A be approved as presented, and that the county's economic development strategy be updated to include the Investment Attraction Plan.
Okay, it's moved by McCackney, second by Ferry. All in favor? Just carried. Go ahead, Will. You're on mute.
Sorry, very sorry. Would you mind if I was excused, please?
You're excused.
Thank you very much.
Yes, it's eleven forty five. We're down to EMS.
Thank you, Warden Burton. I'll be presenting this on behalf of Chief Slatter, who couldn't be here today. And with council's indulgence, I'll combine the two resolutions because they're interconnected. As council may be aware, the property at, excuse me, at one thirty Deser Park Road in Halliburton has been used by Community Paramedicine over the last number of years. It's still required for our purposes moving forward. So the first part of it is we're looking to renew that lease as it was an appropriate place for us. But also we have the opportunity now to acquire, to lease a secondary space there that became available to allow us to store our vehicles indoors, which they currently are outdoors now. So it's, you know, it's better for the longevity and security of our vehicles. And so in addition, we'll be looking, looking to enter into a new lease agreement for the second unit within that development.
Any questions?
Bob? And my only question was about the, the escalator in October next year of seven percent. You know, was there an offset of that or, you know, seven percent's high because that's, you know, it's a quarter of it will pay this year, but next year will be at that full seven percent, which is a fairly high inflation.
Yeah. The only response I can have is that it, it, it does, the chief, his response to me, the chief was supportive of that despite that, because of the benefit we get by acquiring a second unit. That's the only piece I can, and it is covered under our existing budget. So it's not looking, it's not a new money piece, it's, it's within the existing budget. But that's a question I can put back to Chief Slatter to answer when he returns.
Other questions? Resolution? Are you going to combine?
Yes, with your, Staff be directed into a lease agreement pertaining to Unit Four and to renew the existing lease agreement for Unit Six at one thirty Industrial Park Road with John Bratchley Construction Enterprises Limited for a period of two years.
If someone move? Counselor Carter, second by Counselor Shell. All in favor? Just carried. Thank you. Bylaws?
Following bylaws listed under the heading Consideration of Bylaws Being Acted in Past, Bylaw forty two sixteen being invited to approve Draft Plan of Condominium Forty six C E twenty three zero zero two and Bylaw forty two seventeen being invited to approve Draft Plan of Subdivision forty six T twenty three zero 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 one, LRC Camp Limited.
If someone move? Counselor Carter, second by? Counselor Dayu. All in favor? Just carried. Confirmation by?
Be resolved at Bylaw forty three fifteen, a Bylaw being invited to confirm the proceedings of the September twenty fourth, twenty five meeting of Halliburton County Council be considered to be read a first, second, and third time.
If someone move? Counselor Dayu, second by Counselor Danielson. All in favor? Just carried. Arrangement?
That the September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five meeting of Halliburton County Council be adjourned at?
Eleven fifty?
Eleven fifty, sorry.
Could I have someone move? Counselor Carter, second by Counselor Ferry. All in favor? Just carried. Thank you.
I didn't know we could do that without Walt here.
Well, I was, I'd already written McCackney in.